Good evening. I'd like to call this September 11th, a meeting of the Rockingham County School Board to order. Thank you all for joining us tonight. The first item on our agenda is to approve the agenda. Members, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Is that moved?
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. The next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Can you please stand and remove your headgear?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated, and thank you. And since it's September 11th, we're going to have two moments of silence, but we're going to do them in order together. So it'll be an extra long one tonight, but please take a moment of silence to remember the tragedy of 9/11 and all those involved, and as well as our normal moment of silence. And please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll now move into our public comment of the, our public comment portion of the evening. I will remind everyone that the rules for public comment are three minutes per speaker. We'll give you a beep at 30 seconds to go. If you can please wrap up then. At three minutes, the mic will be, will be turned off. Please use the pillars of character in your comments. Please address the board as a whole, and the, the audience should please refrain from any emotional outbursts. The first person on our agenda or on her public comment tonight is Larry Chico.
Well, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm Larry Chico, and I'm here to plead with you to adopt Governor Youngkin's model policies for Virginia public schools without delay. These policies reflect the will of the majority of voters of Rockingham County. Governor Youngkin was elected on the central issue of parental rights, specifically as they relate to parents' responsibility and authority for the education of their children. These model policies place the ultimate responsibility and authority squarely on the shoulders of parents where they belong. Governor Youngkin's model policies also reveal a clear effort to protect and encourage respect for all students. These policies also clearly align with the parents' fundamental right under the 14th Amendment and Virginia law to direct the education of their children. And Governor Youngkin's policies support the First Amendment, which forbids the government to require anyone to adopt or adhere to any ideological beliefs. Local school boards must, in compliance with Virginia and federal law, adopt policies that are consistent with these 2023 model policies. Setting policies that are in line with the rule of law is the responsibility of local school boards. Their job is to serve the constituency by setting and implementing policies that are good for students, good for parents, and promote sound educational practices. This is what good leadership looks like. I was present at the last school board meeting when this question was raised, and I'm concerned that the decision was made to table the matter and seek legal counsel. I'm not sure why there is a concern about the legal ramifications of following the law. Therefore, I urge you, do not delay to fully adopt Governor Youngkin's model policies. I'm Larry Chico, candidate for school board in Rockingham County, District 2. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Margot Heffernan. Did I get that right?
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm going to be speaking in favor of Governor Youngkin's model policy as well. And I'll start out by saying that gender ideology, which has been taught and promoted under Governor Northam's model policies, obliterates material reality and disrupts fundamental laws that protect women and girls, laws that are built on the reality of biological sex. It also teaches children the falsehood that people can change sex. The disruption of law and reality is what has allowed for boys who identify as girls to play on female sports teams in many states. Grown men are stealing women's trophies in the sports world. Girls have been assaulted in their own bathrooms by boys who claim gender, female identities. Most people are not aware that in states like Maine, New Jersey, and California, violent male felons are housed in women's prisons because they claim to be female. All of this is happening because the new gender ideology maintains that anyone at any time can proclaim to be the opposite sex. Let me ask you this. Who is going to be harmed most by this unscientific notion of gender fluidity? Is it a strapping six-foot-two male who suddenly fancies himself a woman and is given a spot on an elite college team? Or is it the young collegiate female athlete who has a shot at a sports scholarship and is competing against a dude in a sports bra? The notion of gender fluidity has severely impacted girls in other ways, as they are the majority of children brainwashed by peers, the school systems, and social media to take on an opposite sex identity. Approximately 300,000 minors, many of them girls, claim such an identity in the U.S. Many are treated in one of the over 100 gender clinics in the U.S., including our own UVA, receiving primitive and disfiguring cures for what has been referred to as gender dysphoria. Sadly, many of these girls believe that life would be easier if they could be the opposite sex. The truth is that pushback is coming from all quarters, left and right, believer and nonbelievers, from radical, left-leaning feminists, from gays who know that this ideology is also targeting boys and girls who are confused about their sexuality. Atheist and esteemed evolutionary biologist Richard Dawkins has joined the fray, for he understands that human beings are the sixth they were born. Children who have been irrevocably maimed by gender medicine are seeking justice for Texas law firms like Campbell, Miller &amp; Payne that represent the growing number of detransitioners who carry the stigmata of these primitive treatments for life.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Holly Cave.
Hi, I'm Holly Cave. I'm a four, District 5. I do not believe that public comment time should be used as a campaign platform, and I think you all respect that. So I'm here tonight as a parent, as a mom, as a representative of 75% of the people in this county, and 84% of the people in my district alone that voted Governor Youngkin into office in 2021. And you know, the end of this summer has felt a lot like 2021, when your constituents showed up in masses to our school board meetings to tell you that we cannot have boys and girls bathrooms, and we cannot have girls and boys bathrooms. You're setting our students up for failure and our school division up for failure. They showed up, they told you that, and no one listened. And then it, you know, it feels a lot like the beginning of 2022, in January and February, when parents showed up in masses again just to ask, please, can we make our own choice for our children as to whether or not they wear masks? And yet, no one listened again, even though it was getting ready to be put into law. It was pushed until the very last second. And now here we are in 2023, and the same thing is going on, and there's no way that the policies that we have right now can be in compliance with the current governor's model policies when we were told in 2021 that we were compliant with those. Right? So why do we have to consult our own attorneys when we have our own attorney general saying, these are legal? It should be simple to move on this subject. And so what I'm asking tonight is that one brave soul, after we hear from Dr. Shiflett with his update, I'm just asking for one brave soul that might move to put this as an action item as our next, at our next meeting. It's already been brought, been brought for information. And then a second brave soul to second that, just so we can go to vote to see where you all stand. So that maybe when people look back on your legacy and your time on this school board, that they might say, you know what, in spite of everything else that they did, that last thing, that last thing that they did, it was right and it was good. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker for tonight is Jeff, and I've already forgotten how to pronounce your last name, Bolander. Thank you.
Yes, thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jeff Bolander, and my personal pronouns are not important here because I don't think that's relevant. And my adjectives aren't relevant either, but there's a noun that's relevant, and that's "I'm a parent." And I think that's relevant whether I was gay, or trans, or straight, that parents have rights and they have responsibilities, and those need to be respected by the school board and the administration. And I ask that you adopt Governor Youngkin's model policies out of respect for parents so that they know what's going on in the schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes our public comment speaking, speakers for the night. We're going to move on to highlights by board members, and we're going to start with Mr. Dixon.
So I only have one highlight tonight, and that is making everyone aware, on September 16th, this Saturday, the town of Elkton is going to be hosting a Touch a Truck event. They're going to have a classic car show, air care's coming, they're going to have vendors, and I think music. So if you've got a young kid, want to have, see a fire truck, see a tow truck, it's a good opportunity to get the kids out, come to Elkton and spend some time down there. So thank you. September 16th.
This Saturday.
Yes, this Saturday, one to four.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Dr. McQuillen?
Thank you, Chair Lohr. Well, school is underway, and, and sports and other clubs and activities are in full swing, and I'm very proud to say that Dr. Shiflett has been to many, many different activities. You'll have to give us at least a variety of the ones that you, you've been to. And it seems to me that the school year 2023, '24 is off to a good start. And always remember that our focus is on our students, and we support our staff, our teachers and staff.
Thank you, Dr. McQuillen. Mr. Cross?
Thank you, Chairman Lohr. I thank you for the public that showed up tonight. Thank you for everyone that came out and spoke in favor of Governor Youngkin's model policy. Hopefully that makes the DNR tomorrow or the next day when it comes out. Tonight, I am, my highlight that I want to talk about is on August the 29th, the Tuesday, I was able to go down to Elkton Middle School, and I, Jack was down there as well, and Dr. Shiflett, he was able to show up, but they, I'm, they, it was, it was a memorial for Bonnie Munger. I don't know if anyone in the community remembers who Bonnie Munger was, but she worked for the school system for many years. And she was my ISS teacher. That's how I first encountered Bonnie. But she was, she was a, she was a great influencer in my life. She was, was there at the time in my life, in Montevideo, when my parents were going through a divorce. And I spent quite a few days in, in school suspension, and Bonnie was my teacher that helped me get through those days in ISS. And she helped a lot of us knuckleheads out in the school system, and she did a pretty good job. So I later, as an SRO, had an opportunity to work with Bonnie, and she was just an outstanding person. I'm sorry. Didn't think I'd get choked up. But she was, I'm, just a, a, a very important person in my life and the community's life. And I'm, I want to thank Principal Emily Holloway for dedicating the benches outside in her remembrance. And for Dr. Shiflett and Joe Dudash, many of those in the system may remember Joe Dudash. He was down there. I am, Ramona Pence showed up down there as well, so it was good to see Ramona. And here Ramona, anyone who knows Ramona, then you know she talks very loud, so it was good for her to be the spokesperson that day, Dr. Shiflett. But I'm, it was just a great, I'm, it was a great highlight. And I'm, it was also, it sits right there in Elkton Middle School, right at the 9/11 memorial that they, they put up years ago, and that just goes right into, I'm, my also highlight tonight is that we as a community and we as a nation would never forget what happened on this tragic day, 9/11, 2001. And I'm, I thought about that today as I watched the TV3 news, and I'm, as I watched the news at 5:00, they, the only thing they said about the, about the 9/11 hijackers was that they were just hijackers. And I thought to myself, the kids are in, that are in school today, they wasn't even born at the time, 9/11. And for us to remember, I mean, for all of us that lived through that, we remember exactly where we were at on that day. We were exactly, we know exactly what was going on. I remember my wife calling me and telling me a plane had flown into the first tower, and I thought maybe a little Cessna plane had flown in and hit it. And so we all turned, I worked at Dick Myers Chevrolet at the time, and I remember turning the radio on, and the next thing we know, I'm, the second plane hit. And so we all gathered at Dick Myers in the showcase, and we gathered hands, and we prayed for our nation that day. And I don't, I don't want our students to forget about it. And I think it's so important, as I thought about this today, that we look into our history classes, and we, and we make sure that they know the full history of what occurred on 9/11 and that we not forget about that. So I'm going to be speaking with Dr. Shiflett in the days to come, and just making sure that as we go forward as a school division, that we don't lose what happened on that tragic day, and that the kids always remember what happened. So those are my highlights. I'm, but Bonnie, if you're listening, thank you for all the, I'm, all the counsel and all the love that you showed me as a kid. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cross.
We are back to school, and things are, things are getting busy and busier. We have a number of field trips to, to hopefully approve later in the meeting, which brings me to my highlight. I've been preparing students to travel to Massachusetts this weekend to participate in the Big E Conference. That, that's big with a big letter E, not Biggie. But it's, it's a regional contest for the eastern part of the United States, FFA members. And if you guys could please keep those students and all of our students in your prayers, I would really appreciate it for safe travels and just, you know, I think we've gotten off to a really great start at school, and let's keep continuing to pray that they'll, they'll continue to have a good, good experience at school. And that's my big highlight coming up. So, Dr. Shiflett?
All right, thank you. So, yeah, so school, this is beginning week four. So someone mentioned that to me today, I was, as I was going around visiting, I was like, wow, we're four weeks in, didn't, doesn't seem like that. But we're off to a good start. Few hiccups, ACs in a couple of the schools last week, we're having some issues, but we think we had most of those resolved, and a few other problems here and there. But overall, it's been a really great start. I've had the opportunity to visit all 25 schools so far, and trying to be present as much as I can and be out in the community. And again, as I said last time, I love the opportunity to see our kids competing in activities, things that they choose to do, right? They are required to come to school, compulsory attendance, and we can use your help with that, parents. But at the same time, you know, they choose to play volleyball, or soccer, or, you know, whatever sport. And so I, last week, I watched the J. Frank Hilliard Middle School volleyball team. They defeated Thomas Harrison, which we cheered them for that. It was awesome to get a win. Watched Spotswood beat Wilson Memorial on Friday night. That was really good. And then today, I went to Shenval Lee and watched my first ever golf match, and I was asked several times to be quiet, or to not speak as loudly as I was. So that's a learning curve for me. I didn't, I don't play golf, so I'm, I'm going to figure it out. You know, I thought they did well. They hit the ball really far, so that was good, I thought. So anyway, I'll have to work on my golf etiquette, I'm sure. And this also, just as an awareness, just, many of you may be aware that the state has amended the budget. You've probably heard this on the news here recently. And hopefully in the coming days, as we get more information about what the numbers really are, we'll reach out to our board members, have some conversations about your priorities. Looks like there will be a 2% raise for our employees in January, then there'll be some sort of one-time funds, but we'll have to see what strings may be attached to that, right? Sometimes they say you can have this money if you do X, Y, and Z. And then finally, I do want to recognize that today is Patriots Day. I wore my patriotic tie, but I want to remember those families who were impacted on 9/11. But also, I want to thank all of our law enforcement and fire and rescue who serve our community and our country each and every day. This past Saturday, I was honored to attend the memorial dedication for J.J. Jefferson and John Painter at Bridgewater College. Those two gentlemen, they paid the ultimate sacrifice to save the lives of students and staff at B.C. on that dreadful day. And as a parent of a B.C. student at that time, I will be forever grateful for their sacrifice. Greater love hath no man than this, that a man lay down his life for his friends. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. We'll now move into our action items. The first action item we have is approval of minutes. Members, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Still have a second? Thank you, Dr. McQuillen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote to approve the minutes of the August 28th meeting as presented. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. The next item on the agenda is the bills and mileage. Dr. Shiflett?
Chair Lohr and board members, I recommend approval of the August 2023 bills as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Members, do I have a motion?
I move that we follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the August 2023 bills and mileage as presented.
Thank you, Dr. McQuillen. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Is there any discussion?
Just to be clear, too, we, a year ago, I had requested to put this online. This is on our website somewhere, right? I don't, I don't know exactly where it's at, but the public can see the bills and mileage as well. Maybe at the next meeting, Dr. Shiflett, you could point that out exactly where that's at on the website for the public. If you wanted to go to look at the bills and mileage, you could do that as well. It's a part of trying to be transparent with, with the public the best we can.
I believe that it's when you click on to the, the meeting after we approve them, like, so the next day, they become live. So we have them currently in executive content, and then tomorrow, once we approve them, they'll be moved up to public content. So that, so if you want to see any of them in, from past meetings, you just click on the, on the, on the, the link to the meeting.
Thank you, Chairman Lohr.
Oh, we still have to approve them. That, that way they will become public. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the bills as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda are field trips. Dr. Shiflett?
So I am going to save all of us some time and not read all these field trips that you have information, okay? But, but they're there. We are, we're going to, you know, Indianapolis, Virginia Beach, Massachusetts, I mean Lexington, Virginia, there's lots of them on here. But I feel confident in, in these field trips and the, the procedures and plans that we have in place. So Chair Lohr and members of the board, I recommend approval of the field trips as presented, and all VHSL field trip activities for the '23, '24 school year.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Members, do I have a motion?
I move to follow superintendent's recommendation to approve field trips as presented, and all VHL field trips activities for the '23, '24 school year.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Do I have a second?
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Is there any discussion? I think it is worthy to point out that this also, this is a blanket approval for all, say, oh, let's say Broadway goes to the state championships in football, we are approving their overnight trip for that, and all those kinds of trips for the, for the entire year. Those are included in this. So it is quite a few field trips.
So is there a possibility that Broadway can play Spotswood in the state championship game?
That would be great. I don't know how sports work, but it sounds good to me.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next on the agenda is the school board meeting schedule. Dr. Shiflett?
Chair Lohr and board members, I recommend approval of the 2024 school board meeting schedule as presented. I shared it last meeting as information items. So do you have any questions about any of that, or?
Just to make the public aware, we changed this, and a lot to do with the new redistricting that we're going to be doing, and a lot of discussions talking about that in the coming months ahead. So I'm, for, I know there's a lot, especially in my district, District 3, that are, parents are just wanting to know information on that. So the redistricting process, we're going to be talking about and moving forward on that, but that's one of the biggest reasons I'm changing the schedule was so we can get more community input on the redistricting.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I, I move that we follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the 2024 school board meeting schedule as presented on August 28th, 2023.
Thank you, Dr. McQuillen. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Is there any discussion?
Okay, full disclosure, we just voted that I'm going to be a chaperone on a field trip for one of these meetings, and I think it's actually going to be the meeting that we're voting for the redistricting. I can try to zoom in, but just so that you guys are aware, I might not be at that meeting. So if we, if we want to change it, now's the time. Are we good? Okay, very good. Any further discussion?
Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the calendar as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is policy provisions, and I believe we have Becky Tenell.
Hello, Chair Lohr, members of the board, and Dr. Shiflett. I have an action item for you. This policy came for information last month, or two weeks ago. It's just some change in wording on the personal leave. It's not anything big, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Members, any questions?
Dr. Shiflett, do you have a recommendation for us?
Chair Lohr and board members, I recommend approval of the proposed policy revisions as presented by Mrs. Tenell.
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuillen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote on the policy as presented. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. That concludes our action items for the evening. We're going to move into our information items, and Dr. Shiflett, I believe you're going to give us a presentation on redistricting timeline.
So I wanted to share with the board just sort of our thoughts about trying to look at redistricting, and this would be for the opening of the 2024 school year, so nothing would be impacted during this year, but I think we need to give some deliberation and thought to this process. So if you recall, at our May 22nd meeting, Dr. Schikele, who was then superintendent, presented a preliminary presentation to the board. It was under sort of like just some superintendent updates, and talked about It was under sort of like just some superintendent updates and talked about some potential redistricting proposals, right? Nothing was formally put out there, but here's some things that we could do. And so that kind of got people wanting to know, okay, when's this going to happen? What's it going to look like? So this summer, if you recall, we met and we talked about what should our timeline be from a division perspective as we're getting ready for the budget and thinking about 2024. It's, it helps us in knowing maybe where the schools will be and, excuse me, where the students will be and which schools, so we can get the staffing as, as correct as possible. So this timeline would, on October the 9th, school board meeting, we would present the proposal, right, to the public at Broadway High School. And it's going to be based on updated data from students this current school year. So we're not just going to take May 22 and roll it over, the May 22 presentation and roll it over, but where are we? And maybe even have a couple of different scenarios that we'll look at. And then there would be opportunities then for the public in October meeting, which will be here, 23rd, for folks to give public comment. And then the 13th at Spotswood High School. And then the 27th would be back in here for an opportunity for the public to provide comments, then thinking about a vote on November the 27th. So there is just a timeline. So this is not saying what it's going to look like, but just how we would sort of plan it out. In December, December, we're usually asking principals to give us a sense of what, you know, their personnel needs are for the coming years we're working on the budget. So this would give us sort of an idea of, you know, if, if I'm an elementary school and I'm getting 100 students, then what do I need as far as teachers or office staff and support staff? So we're just thinking through those pieces. You know, here it is with redistricting. You know, our overall, our families and students love their schools where they attend. So when we talk about trying to move them to another school, it doesn't usually go so well. But I will also say, over the years, I've lived through this a couple of rounds, folks who have had to redistrict come back and say, you know what? This school is, I think it was hard for me to swallow that someone said South, you know, that another school was as good as South River when I was the principal, but I, but I believed them, right? Because they, all of our schools are really great. But I understand too, right? You get connected to a community. We talk about family. And so then we want to shuffle kids around. That doesn't always feel good. But we're trying to be good stewards of our taxpayers' dollars and not wanting to build and add on when we don't have to. So we're trying to be thoughtful about this. So here's the timeline. Any questions or what-ifs or redos? I mean, this is just information, just trying to keep you informed, keep the public informed.
So Dr. Shiflett, just saying that on the 23rd of October and November the 13th, there will be opportunity for the public to comment at those particular meetings?
Yep.
Okay. And on the 27th?
There would be opportunity on the 27th as well. Usually public comment comes earlier in the meeting, then we have action. So someone may have a compelling argument, right? And I know that none of you are looking forward to this, and I, I'm sorry. I apologize in advance, but it's part of the duties, so.
It's, and it's also not really just because of, we've got to make the decision as a school board, but our board supervisors, they also made the decision to do a lot of the urban development that's happening in District 3, which is also going to cause more students to come to go to Cubron, to go to Peakview, that will have an impact on Spotswood High School. So it causes an impact on school board members to have to make a decision here as well. So get involved in your local government issues that are happening because that has an impact on the building that we're doing here locally, is having an impact now on having to redistrict for kids in schools as well. So, which had an impact on us adding a $14 million project on the Broadway High School. And, and how's that going along, by the way?
I got a thumbs up.
It's going good? Okay.
At, at some point, do you think we could take a little tour?
All right, great.
So we can think about that if you guys want to do it.
Any additional questions? Thank you very much for that report. I think you're going to stay right there, and we're going to go into, if I can see it, an update on the model policies.
Yes, so heard a couple of public comments about the model policies today. And so part of my goal is to always be transparent. What are we thinking? What are we doing as, as a school division? And I serve at the pleasure of the board. And, and last time I was hearing from a majority of the board that you wanted to seek legal counsel, right? So at our last school board meeting, I shared an overview of the model policies to build awareness for our school board members and the community. Since then, Chair Lohr and I met with our school board attorney to determine a date and time for our entire school board to meet with our legal counsel to thoroughly review the model policies and compare the contents of the model policies to current RCPS practices and policies in regards to our treatment of transgender students and parental rights. I believe in parental rights. I'm a parent, and I think it's important. The ultimate goal of this meeting is to determine what changes are necessary to make certain RCPS is consistent with the model policies. This meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September 20, from 1:00 to 4:00, and this meeting will occur in closed session. So I just, again, bring, bring an awareness, really not so much to the board, right? Because you have that date on your calendar, I hope, if not, go ahead and put it in there, but I know you do. But for the community, right? So they understand, well, what are they doing? They said last time, they talked about model policies, haven't heard anything about it. We want to be transparent, and then we'll see how that meeting transpires, you know? Are there changes we have to bring then for information and take it to action? We'll, we'll look through that, right? Because as I shared last time, I think there's some, some tweaks that we have to make to some policies to make sure that we're aligned and we're consistent with those policies.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I do want to add that I'm, I asked at the last board meeting, and this is not directed to you, Dr. Shiflett, at all, but I asked at the last board meeting that this would be put up on an action item because this model policy of Governor Youngkin came out in July 18th of this year. So we've had the model policy for a while to look at and to, we've been talking about it for over a year on different court cases that you brought up last time, Dr. Shiflett, that are in there. And so I'm, it's, I believe it's incumbent upon the board to make a vote on this. Because I'm in favor of adopting the model policy. I like the autonomy of school boards, being able to tell Richmond that no, it's not, what's good for Richmond is not good for Rockham County. But that was good for Northam's model policy because he was wanting to take down all the gender signs on bathrooms, and that's not good for Rockham County. That's not what we want here in Rockham County. But as I read through Governor Youngkin's model policy, it, it lines up with state law, federal law, lines up with Supreme Court rulings, and it lines up with the Virginia Constitution as well. So I don't, I don't, and also, we have an opinion from the Attorney General and that went over the whole document and says that the model policies are not against the law. So if the law changes, then as a school board, who are elected representatives, then we could go back and change what we need to change in the model policy. But as of now, this model policy is not against the law. So I don't know what the holdup is to, to continue to hold this up. Because I sat through quite a few meetings throughout the summertime where we were meeting, almost felt like week after week at different meetings. And it feels like now that we're kind of, we're stalling on this for some reason. I don't know whether it's because there's an election coming up this year or not, but we're stalling on this model policy at parents' expense. And that's what I'm not happy about because the parents are still having to be in the dark of what's really going on in their kids' lives at school. So I want to partner with parents. I want to partner with Youngkin's model policy and put it in place. And I will, I'll be that brave soul tonight. I would ask that it would be on the next agenda as an action item. But because we have time, again, we, we have time. I sent out an email after the last board meeting to Chair Lohr, asking that we would speak with the attorney before this board meeting to be able to seek legal counsel and hear everything they have to say, and then make a decision as a school board. I want to vote on the model policy as is, because I am in favor of it. And I think it's important that the, our community members know where each school board member, where they line up on this model policy. So I'm, that's, I don't have anything to add to what you're saying, but I wanted to add to that because it was a topic of discussion during public comment tonight. So thank you.
To answer Mr. Cross's question, I believe, well, I know, that the holdup on voting on the model policies is, goes back to the very first paragraph of the model policies state that this policy is provided as a sample for consideration or used by local school boards as they develop and implement the policies in compliance with the act. Each school board shall adopt policies they're consistent with, but may be more comprehensive than this sample policy. The sample policy has six lines of dress code. Our dress code, the Rockham County Public Schools dress code, is three pages? It's long. It's lengthy. It's much more than three, six, six lines. And we have, we need to come together, and we're planning on doing that on September 20th, coming together and looking at which of these items are currently in our more comprehensive policies than the sample policies have provided, and which policies we need to add into our current policies. And that's the purpose of the September 20th meeting. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. We're going to move on to the Rockham County School Board Working Agreement, which is another thing we're going to discuss on September 20th.
So July 12th, we had a working session with Dr. E. Wayne Harris, and we talked about governance and roles and responsibilities. And one of the topics that came up was a working agreement. And I think maybe this, this school board at some point maybe has had this discussion prior and previous years. I don't really know all the backstory on that, but it sounded like something we would be interested in, in creating. And as we had conversations, we said, okay, how about we model our working agreement after the six pillars of character? Since at our school board meetings, we try to recognize students who demonstrate and display the six pillars of character counts. And so I sent to the school board members a Google form and asked them to give some statements, actions, and behaviors that they think would match up with the six pillars of character. And at our meeting, I think it was in, we had quite a few meetings this summer, Mr. Cross, you're exactly right. I think it was the July 19th meeting, maybe. We came together, and that was our first draft. And we just said, hey, here's what we put down on paper. Let's, what do you want to do? And one of the things you, you folks decided was you wanted to put "I will" in front of the statements to make it, you know, someone's going to sign that I will do this. And, and then we, you know, had some similar wording, so we kind of put some things together. And so you have in your folder what I'm going to call Draft 2, right? And, and I have no intentions really of bringing this back next board meeting for action. I want to work on this some more. But to put your eyes on it, again, and I'm not going to read all of these to you, it'll be there for the public to see what, what is there. And then maybe thinking about getting something this fall, and then as we get new board members next January, then we can look at, do we need to revise it, edit it? But these are just, for example, I'll share one for citizenship, says, "I will advocate for Rockham County Public Schools." That's simple, but it seems like it makes sense that you would be a school board for Rockham County, that's who you'd advocate for, right? Although we have moral purpose and we care about all children, right? But Rockham County is our wheelhouse. This is who we serve. So, but I just want, again, this is in trying to be transparent with the community. We're, we're creating our own working agreement. We could have taken one from VSBA or from some other school division, but this one's going to be tailored to us. So thank you for your work looking at that. Let's have conversations if you want to add a comma somewhere, or semicolon, or an exclamation point, or whatever. If we miss something, we'll keep working on it, okay? This is Draft 2. All right? Any questions or comments?
I want to say thank you, just publicly again, for everything you're doing for Rockham County Public Schools. It's been a great transition since June, the end of June. And so I'm, but thank you for all you're doing. Thank you for all the videos you're putting out there. Thank you for all the just ballgames and all the extracurricular stuff you're headed up and, and for everything you're doing for our employees. I've heard a lot throughout the last couple of months. So thank you once again. It's, it's an honor to serve with you, and just thank you for all you're doing.
Thank you. Thank you for your support, right? I'm just trying to live out my calling.
As we all are. Thank you very much, Dr. Shiflett. Board members, you have a financial review and the attendance report in your folders for, for your information. And that concludes our information items for the evening. We'll now move on to other business, school board questions and comments. Mr. Dixon, we're going to start with you again.
All right. Well, Chair Lohr, Dr. Shiflett, I've talked to a few members on the board, Mr. Cross, Mr. Falk, who's not here tonight. Following up on one of the things I wanted to do in the interview process, Dr. Shiflett, we, we want to move forward with looking at Stop the Bleed Kits as a layer of school safety and protection. Just starting that conversation, whether or not there's grant funding available for it, how much it would cost if we wanted to pay out of pocket, if we, we are coming into some one-time reoccurring funds, and just start looking at that, that process to having those implemented at all of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McQuelkin. Pass. Thank you, Mr. Cross.
Thanks, Jack, for bringing that up. That was one of the things that we, that was gone over this summer at the school safety conference that I attended with, with Dr. Shiflett and a few other school personnel in our SROs. But one of the trainings, one of the positions I've been advocating for, for since before I got on the board was a, a emergency manager position that would oversee our school division with, with the safety. And it's not a position that gets involved with law enforcement matters. So if there's something that happens at the school that's law enforcement, that emergency manager doesn't get involved in that, the mess-up investigations or law matters. But what it does, as I sat there as a school resource officer for almost a decade, was looking at how can we hold the school division accountable, keeping our students and our staff safe? And this emergency manager position came up when Governor Bob McDonald brought this up with his School Safety Task Force after Sandy Hook shooting back in 2010, I believe it was, 2010. And so at the conference we were just at, it talked about these kits, I actually called them to-go bags, but it would be great to have these inside of our nurses' station and to have something in case of emergency, more than just an active shooter, but just, they could be used for a lot of different things. So thank you for bringing that up. I really do appreciate that, Jack, because this is part of, of school safety that is something that we need. Thank you. And that's all I have.
Thank you. With school back in session, I'm rather alarmed to see a couple of posts, not very many, but a couple of posts about people running the, the school bus stop sign. And I would like to revisit the stop, the school bus stop cameras sooner rather than later, if possible. And then I would also like to implore our, our community to please stop. When, when you see a school bus, give them lots of room, and those flashing lights mean stop, because there's probably a tiny little child getting off that bus, and we just want to be super safe around our children. So please, community, stop when you see the red lights. I actually have a friend who lost their child to a school bus stop accident years ago. And the hurt that's still in that family, none of us, none of us want that for anyone. Just, it's, if it just takes you a couple more minutes to get to where you're going, it's fine. You'll be there. Let's all arrive alive. So I would, but I would like to revisit the school bus cameras, if possible. And I think that's my only question. Dr. Shiflett, do you have anything else for tonight?
No, I'd just like to thank everyone who came out tonight. I appreciate the civil discourse, right? And I hope it remains that way. And again, while I'm here and have the mic, I just, you know, you talk about bus drivers and bus safety, you know? Shout out to all the bus drivers in Rockham County Public Schools for what they do. It's, it's a tough job. I always tell them, you know, who, who would turn their back on 40 or 50 students, right? But that's what you have to do so you can drive the bus. But they do a great job. And we'll explore these, you know, from Jack, for your Stop, Stop the Bleed Kit, and also for the School Bus Stop Camera, and see, you know, see what's out there and what we should do. And I do believe firmly that our schools are a very safe place, but we can always look to add layers of safety. And so we're always wanting to be thoughtful about that. So, yeah, thank you. So, yeah, thank you for bringing those to my attention.
Thank you. And thanks to Dr. McQuilkin for reminding me. Do we have any students in the meeting tonight? Any students with us? Yay! Welcome. I think we probably need to sign your agendas when you get done, so please come on up when we're done. We're just about there. But thank you, guys, for coming tonight. Thank you for being part of Rockham County Schools. And let's give our students a round of applause, folks. And thank you to everyone for joining us tonight. But now we have reason to go into closed session. Members, do I have a motion?
I'm going to try this the first time. All right. I move that the board enter a closed meeting to discuss and consider the following pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711. Personnel-specific, personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation, and one or more particular student specifically related to requests regarding compulsory school attendance based on religious beliefs that would involve disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning a student.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? So that everybody knows, we have a specific motion by law that we have to make that only legally allows us to discuss certain things in closed session, and then when we come out of closed session, we also certify that these are all we talked about. So that's why it's so important that, that somebody make the motion, and it sounds all, all official like that. So thank you, guys, thank you all for, or thank you, Mr. Dixon, for making the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of entering closed session, please say aye. Aye, opposed, same session. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. We are in closed session. Please have a safe trip home and a safe, wonderful two weeks.